I prepared my platform.
A sheet of steel.
That's awesome.
That little...
That's okay.
And I'm like...
All right.
I did, I lost it.
All right, I would like to start tonight's meeting, opening it. This is a business meeting for Stillwater Area Public Schools, Independent School District 834. The date is January 9th, 2020. And so would the secretary please call the rule?
Chair Potachik?
Here.
Vice Chair Pearson?
Here.
Treasurer Weisberg?
Here.
Clerk Stivland?
Here.
Director Burns?
Here.
Director Pelletier?
Here.
And Director Riley?
Here.
You have a quorum?
Thank you. And kung lau, good to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And next we have the district mission statement.
That's Jen. Oh, sorry. Pardon me. "The mission of Stillwater Area Public Schools in partnership with students, family, and community is to develop curious individuals who are active and engaged leaders in an ever-changing world by challenging all students as they travel along their personalized learning pathways."
Thank you. And our school board goals?
Yep, I've got them, thanks. "In partnership with community, parents, and students, the school board of Stillwater Area Public Schools ensures excellence in education by increasing student achievement for all students, securing long-term financial stability of the district, and increasing community trust and engagement."
Thank you. And could I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So...
Liz moved.
I'll second.
And Shelley second. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raising your right hand, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Now we go to the board organization. And our first business item is the election of chair. So board members, if you would turn to page seven in your booklets. And I just want to go through the nomination process a little bit beforehand so everyone is clear what happens. The board chair will begin the meeting until the board is organized. The gavel will then be passed to the newly-elected board chair, who will conduct the meeting from that point forward. The board nomination process is as follows. One board member nominates a candidate for office. A board member can nominate him or herself. A second must follow from another. Actually, you've got choice on it, but the precedent in 834 is that we do look for a second. And if there is no second, the nomination would fail for lack of a second. The chair will then ask the nominee if they accept the nomination. And then following that, the chair will ask three times if there are any other nominations. A vote is taken if there are no... Or no vote... Rather, a vote is taken if there are no other nominations. A paper ballot, and each board member should have those in your folder. If there is more than one person nominated for the office, there is a paper ballot. Each board member would vote for one candidate and sign his or her ballot. The votes of each board member would be read and the winning candidate announced. Votes of each board member would be recorded in the minutes of the meeting. According to Robert's rules, a person can abstain from the voting but needs to write this on his or her ballot. So that's where we are right now. So we are open to nominees or...
Can I just ask one question about the procedure?
Sure, please.
And I know that last year was my first time at this, and I think this is probably a procedure that has been followed in the past. But my understanding is that Robert's rules actually, in terms of the nomination and the second, that there isn't... Robert's rule says that there isn't a second necessary for a nomination. It's unlike a different kind of motion. So I don't know. I know that we've maybe done it this way. I don't know how often we've done it in the past. But Robert's rules would say that there isn't a second.
And I think Sherri checked on this, and you could do it either way. So we went with past precedent, but I think we can weave it up to the board.
Do we have a policy on it? MSBA says that you do not have to have a second. That's what's in their policy that we read today.
Right. And that's what Robert's rule says, that there is no second for a nomination.
Other comments, questions?
I'm in favor of abiding by Robert's rules on this.
Okay, is there a second to that?
I don't see why we can't do it the way we've done it every other time.
Okay. Could I have a motion either way, please?
A move that we do it the way it's been done in the past.
I'll second.
All those in favor or further discussion?
Again, the reason why not to do it the way in the past is because that's not the way Robert's rules has. That's why I have it.
Sir?
I think that's a fair point. I can see advantages to doing it both ways. I guess I'm a little bit confused as to why this wasn't brought up before now, because it should have been taken care of and arranged ahead of time.
I agree.
So it's a little bit confusing to deal with it right now. But, I mean, I'm open to whatever the vote is.
Others want to express? I think we have a motion or...
Yeah, I think Denise wanted to say something. I guess I thought we were just going to follow Robert's rules. So I don't think this is a difficult... We're just following the rules of order, so Denise.
Robert's rules does set precedent over past practice. I mean, if you're challenged on it, just know that. And that is, I think, in your packet. If you look at the... Well, I guess that's about the abstaining, but through MSBA, if you look at that, if you follow MSBA.
Okay, but then why was it like this in the packet?
If we were just asked for clarification, so I'm just clarifying.
Shelley?
Well, I was just... And I'm not sure if it's in our current policy. It has been in our policy that anytime we can suspend Robert's rules... I don't know. I guess I don't understand either way what... Whether it matters at the end of the day to try to get down to one. I think... So I think we just need to decide what we're going to do and go with it.
Okay, I'm looking at the packet put out by MSBA, and it's called Revised September 2019. And the title of it, "The First Monday in January." And I think all board members received a copy because Sherri sent that out earlier. And if you go to... I believe it was on page...
Page three?
Yes. Have you got it there, Sherri?
Yes.
Second.
So the second bullet, "Under Procedures of Election of Officers," I think is what you're referring to, Mike?
Yes. And it says, "Any member of the board may nominate..." "Other board member nominations do not require a second." So following that. Okay. So do you still want your motion and second?
Because I'm just confused why it's coming up now. It seems odd.
Sure.
I did the reason... I mean, sorry, I don't mean to jump in.
One more time.
Yeah. And I had... When I looked through the packet, I saw this, the procedure in here. And I just... I looked up Robert's rules, and that's why.
Okay. Thank you. Tina?
I guess from what I read and my understanding is that you can really set your own practice. And this is what has been done in the past. And if the only stipulation was that everybody understands what the practice is going forward, and that has been the practice going forward. So I'm really not sure why the conversation is now. If there was an issue, it should have been prior to tonight.
Okay. Shelley?
Can I just... Besides it being how Robert's rules suggests, is there another reason that...
No, I mean, no, there's no nefarious kind of motivation here.
No, and I'm not looking for nefarious. I just want to understand.
Yeah. I looked at it in... When I looked at Robert's rules, it says that it's not required, that you don't have a second. And I looked at our policy, and your Director Riley is correct, that we can set this by in policy, but we don't have an in policy. So then usually you revert then to Robert's rules.
Any other comments? So we have a motion before the floor, and I think the motion is to require a second.
No, the motion was to just do it the way we've... Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, to require. Yeah.
Okay. So everybody knows what the motion is.
Sorry about that.
All those sign... Shelley?
I'm sorry. So what we are in essence doing is just voting to suspend Robert's rules on this and set our own practice.
Yes.
Correct.
Well, just to be clear, it doesn't look like, according to the packet, it says if there is no second, based on past practice of this board, the nomination fails for lack of a second. So I was preparing to go through this process based on what was in the packet. And if that's what our past practice is, then we're not establishing a new way of doing it. We're doing it the way we've done it in the past.
I... So I did... Can I, Chair?
Sure.
And I am really sorry that I don't... I left my notes at home, but Sherri, could you please... Do you have Robert's rules in front of you? And I think it's page 19.
The first Monday packet, is that what you...
The Robert's Rules of Order Official Book, the revised Edition 11. Because I am trying to figure this out as well, like what the proper procedure is, and do we have a policy in place, which I found out we don't. And then the conversation is accurate in that what is our past practice? But now I need to find this statement here. "In some organizations, a particular practice may sometimes come to be followed as a matter of established custom," so similar to like what we have with our practice, right? "So that is treated practically as if it were prescribed by a rule. If there is no contrary provision in the parliamentary authority or written rules of the organization, the established custom should be adhered to unless the assembly by a majority vote agrees in a particular instance to do otherwise. However, if a customary practice is or becomes in conflict with the parliamentary authority or any written rule," which, again, to the point, we don't really have a policy, so we don't have a written rule. "And a point of order citing the conflict is raised at any time, the custom falls to the ground, and the conflicting provision in the parliamentary authority or written rule must thereafter be complied with. If it is then desired to follow the former practice, a special rule of order or in appropriate circumstances, standard rule or bylaw provision can be added or amended." So I guess the point is, past practice is fine. We don't have anything written down. We don't have anything in policy. So that kind of debunks our argument of past practice. So I won't be voting for that, because I'm voting for appropriate written, which is Robert's Rules of Order, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments? Just to clarify, and then I'll tell you the position I take. If you go to page three, you go a little bit earlier, and it says, "Procedures for Election of Officers." And again, all board members had this in advance. "State statutes are silent as to the method of electing officers, except that the election must be by open vote and not by any form of secret ballot." MS 13D .01 subdivision four. "Each board therefore may establish its own procedures to address such issues, including procedures for nominating officers and voting procedures. The board should establish the procedures in advance of the meeting so that everyone will know what to expect from the outset. Once developed, the board needs to follow the procedure that it has adopted, but the procedures can be changed if the majority of the board members agree. Such procedures for the election of officers are provided below. Once the meeting has been called to order, the acting chair has been determined, and the agenda has been approved." And I did read the second bullet point there, which was, "Any member of the board may nominate other board members, and nominations do not require a second." What I'm going to do is personally, I'm going to vote against the motion, just because, regardless of who's elected here, I don't want the procedure to be the issue. So it... And I think we can get a consensus for that. But that's up to this board to decide that. So any other comments anybody wants to make on this?
It just seems odd to me that several people on this board have been on the board for more than four years now, and that this is the first time this has ever come up. I think it's odd. And I think it's odd that it's coming up the night of a board meeting. Other people have complained when things come up right before a board meeting, at a board meeting, and that's exactly what this is. And it's very odd.
Thank you. Other... Sarah?
I just want to, I guess, make the point that we obviously need to have further conversation about this after, and consider adding some wording in our policies about what the policy should be.
Okay. Tina?
I guess I would have to agree with Director Weisberg, and that I would appreciate if there was a concern that it be brought up ahead of tonight, being that this is what the practice has been in the past, and this is what was laid out for the board members to follow for tonight. And I think we've now spent, what, another 15 minutes, 20 minutes, talking about something that probably was not necessary.
Anyone else? Okay, does everybody understand the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye and raising your right hand, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nate?
Aye.
And did you get a count?
I did, thank you.
Okay. So I believe we're back to the nomination process. And the procedure will be that board members can nominate a candidate for office. No second is required. So after a nominee has taken place, the nominee will ask them whether they want to accept.
I think that... I think the motion passed, so a second will be required.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Yes.
That's all right.
I didn't hear it right.
That was a four-three vote, so you will need to have a second.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, everybody. Okay, so let's go to nominations for chair. Anyone wish to make a nomination?
I nominate Sarah Stivland for chair.
Okay. Sarah has been nominated. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Tina, a second? Mark?
I'd like to nominate Director Potachik.
Before you do that, though, let's do this. I'm just going to ask Sarah if she'll accept the nomination.
I do.
Okay. And Mark?
That's my nomination.
Nominated. Is there a second? A motion fails for lack of a second? Are there any other nominations? Jen?
I would like to nominate Director Pearson for chair.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second then.
Mark seconded. Are you willing?
Sure.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, would you take out your ballot? And we have two nominees. And mark your ballot who you would vote for. And then please sign it.
Okay. Voting for Director Stivland is Director Riley, Director Potachik, Director Stivland, and Director Weisberg. And voting for Director Pearson is Director Pelletier, Director Burns, and Director Pearson. So your winner is Director Stivland.
Do we switch now?
Yeah, we switch.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Give me a moment. Okay. So the next thing on the agenda is the election of the vice chair. Do we have any nominations for vice chair?
And I'm Nate... Okay, did I just say it? Sorry. And I'm Nate Tina for vice chair.
Is there a second?
Can I second?
Yes.
I believe you can, yes?
I'll second.
So Tina seconds?
I don't believe you can.
You can't second.
I don't believe you can.
You can't?
I don't believe you can. Sorry, Robert's rules.
Okay, that's fine. Is there a second? Mike?
I'm just going back to the procedure that's in our booklet here. And it said if there... A member can nominate him or herself.
Can nominate yourself?
Nominate.
Yes. Can nominate.
But you can't second.
Right.
Okay, so I have... Oh, okay, sorry. I haven't someone to nominate. Okay.
If you can.
Director Weisberg has nominated Director Riley. But there isn't a second at this point. So it fails for lack of second. Are there any other nominations?
I would like to nominate Director Pearson for vice chair.
Okay. Are there any seconds?
Oh, I can't do it again, right? I can't nominate.
At this point, I don't know.
Can I nominate again if mine failed?
Do we have a second?
I'll second then.
Okay. Mark seconds. I'm going to get the last names eventually, but right now I just...
I'm sorry, I did the same thing.
Okay. Mark seconds. So do you accept the nomination?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any other nominations for vice chair?
Since mine failed, can I nominate somebody else?
I believe so.
Okay. I nominate Director Potachik.
Okay. We have a nomination for Director Potachik. Is there a second? Or vice chair? Director Riley seconds. Do you accept?
Good question. Yes.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? All right, we have two candidates for the role of vice chair. If you take the ballot in front of you, take this time to vote. If you take the ballot in front of you, take this time to vote.
I think it's Director Patachik. And voting for?
No.
Oh, it's Burns.
And then voting for Director Patachik is Director Weisberg, Director Riley, and Director Patachik. So your vice chair is Director Pearson.
Okay, thank you. The next on the agenda is the election of the clerk. Do we have any nominations for clerk?
I nominate Director Patachik.
Okay, we have a nomination for Director Patachik for clerk. Are there any seconds?
I'll second.
Director Riley seconds. Do you accept? Are there any other nominations?
I'll nominate myself.
Director Burns nominates himself. Is there a second? Director Pelletier seconds. I guess I don't have to ask if you accept. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? All right, please use the ballot in front of you to vote for clerk.
Voting for Director Patachik is Director Weisberg, Director Stivland, Director Pearson, Director Patachik, and Director Riley. And voting for Director Burns is Director Burns and Director Pelletier. Your clerk is Director Patachik.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next thing on the agenda is the election of the treasurer. Are there any nominations for treasurer? Director Pearson?
Thank you. I'd like to nominate Director Burns for treasurer.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. Do you accept the nomination?
Yes.
Very well, are there any other nominations? Director Weisberg?
I'd like to nominate Director Riley.
Director Riley, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. Do you accept the nomination, Director Riley, for treasurer?
I accept.
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Okay, we have two candidates. Please vote.
Weisberg, and Director Patachik. And voting for Director Burns is Director Pelletier, Director Pearson, and Director Burns. Your treasurer is Director Riley.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on. The next thing on the agenda is the superintendent report.
All right, thank you.
Do we want to ta, do we need to take a five-minute break?
No.
That's what I had to do in a quick 30 seconds. Oh, should we take a five-minute break and allow people to move their seats? Okay, I call a recess to shuffle their seats. We're now in session. The next item on the agenda is the superintendent's, superintendent's report.
Thank you. I'll keep it short. We've only been back in session with school a few days, and many of the things that have happened this week, last two days of last week, we'll have, I think, board reports and student reports on. The community engagement working group met today, and the topic was connecting with our senior populations, and I'll let our directors who were there comment on that, but it was a great discussion. We also met with the Cunningham Group, the resource group, meant to plan for the upcoming community design teamwork. And then we met yesterday with the city of Woodbury, the mayor and administrators, just talking about community connections and upcoming opportunities for the school district to partner with the city of Woodbury and surrounding community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And the next item is the student report. And we have Kulak.
Yeah.
Who's here to give us a report. Elise is at a competition of some kind.
Yes, Elise is at BPA, or Business Professionals of America, and she's competing. I believe that she was there at like 7:00 already, so got up really early for that. Just to start off, right now is a really busy time for students. Finals are next week, and, but that doesn't really put a stop to anything. I mean, you know, extracurriculars are still going on, and just to actually go off of that, the speech team is going to their first official tournament this Saturday at Pico Lake. This is the first year for their head coach, Joe Calca, and I just got a quote from the speech captain, Grace McDonough. The team is really growing this year, and with a lot of eighth graders. Everybody's putting in three hours a week, so there is a lot of heavy lifting going on. A lot of students are coming up with their own ideas and writing a lot of their speeches independently, end quote. And this is pretty normal for speech kids. They're always working, always on the grind, but, you know, wish them luck, because they're going to be up really early tomorrow, and they're going to be competing all day. Going into the other activities or sports, the Alpine Ski Team, both boys and girls team won their first conference meet, and they were competing at the Wild Mountain today, and traveling to Welch Village to meet tomorrow. The basketball, the boys' team, is hosting Mounds View tomorrow night at the Stillwater Area High School, and the basketball team, the girls' side, is actually going to be traveling to Mounds View tomorrow, too. The gymnastics team is hosting White Bear Lake actually tonight, and the girls' hockey team beat White Bear Lake on Saturday, and they will be hosting Park tonight and traveling to Rochester on Saturday. The swim and dive team continues undefeated at their dual meet competitions, and will be hosting Roseville tonight. Senior Josiah Flick has broken the school record in diving twice already this season. Flick is defending state champion, too, and wrestling is undefeated in the conference, and will be hosting the 42nd Annual Pony Stampede at Stillwater Area High School on Saturday as well. Right now, the avid class is writing at the high school, the senior class is writing scholarships, and a handful of them have gotten into college already, too. And right behind them, the junior class is actually preparing for ACTs, which are coming up this spring. Around this time, families are registering their kids for kindergarten, and so that's going to be really exciting, and also really scary. My little brother is one of them, and I'm excited for him, but also scared, and do have some concerns for that. And lastly, I want to briefly speak on what I experienced as a student rep at the last school board meeting. As a senior in high school, I'm currently enrolled in U.S. government course. One of the biggest things that I have learned is that our government structure relies on elected representatives to fairly represent the people. The school board's elected role is to vote to help grant the public's wants and needs, and to better the student's educational career. Like many others, I was very optimistic about, that there would be a vote to expand Brookview. Unfortunately, this did not happen. What saddened me the most was that the board majority voted against the expansion, even though the community design team gave the recommendation to do so. We need to recognize the long-term impact of this vote. Maybe it was not the intent of the school board, but I infer that this will maybe lead to the lack of community participation in the future, because why would anybody want to participate if a committee in communities in the past have been disregarded? Not only was there a design team, but ever since I've been a student representative, every single meeting that I have attended, there has been stakeholders such as teachers, parents, and community members come to speak on the expansion of Brookview. Decisions like these are what make people more cynical about the process, and about real change happening in their district, and these decisions to not implementing achievement gap occurring in Brookview area as well. However, cynicism is just as much of a choice as hope is. I'm hopeful about the future, not because I want to, but because I have to. I have to hope that in the future, the school board will be more open and really recognize the volunteer time of the people, and what the majority of the people want.
Okay, moving on. Thank you very much, Kulak. The next item on the agenda is the open forum. And before we get started on that, I need to read the, the open forum statement. If you wish to speak to the school board, you will be able to do so at the start of the school board meeting during open forum. You may sign in only for yourself, not other individuals or groups, and only in person. The sign-in sheet is made available 30 minutes prior to the start of the meeting. Thank you. Due to time limitations, we will limit the number of speakers to 15, with each speaker receiving three minutes. If you spoke at the last meeting, please consider allowing others to sign in before you. After you address the board, please leave the podium. Stillwater Area School District welcomes input from citizens, as community involvement fosters better decision-making and improved learning experiences for all students. While comments and questions are welcome during open forum, law prohibits the board from discussing concerns about individual employees or students in a public meeting. We will stop the proceedings immediately if employee or student privacy issues are raised, and direct the speaker to forward comments regarding individual employees or students to the superintendent. Because we are modeling civil discourse for our community, speakers must present their testimony in a respectful manner. Vulgarity, character attacks, malice, or specific complaints identifying staff or students by name or implication will not be permitted. The board will not deliberate, discuss, or engage in conversation with speakers during open forum. However, the board may ask the administration to review the concerns that are presented. And with that, we will have our first speaker. We have Carl Blondin.
Carl Blondin, Stillwater, Minnesota. Chair Stivland, members of the board, Superintendent Pontrelli, thank you. Dr. Patachik, your dishonesty about public spending and ungracious comments towards others are a threat to both the financial position and the educational mission of this school district. At the last school meeting in 2019, on December 19th, you made a false statement about public spending. This board, from January through October under your tenure, spent $36,214 on legal expenses. None of that, not one cent, was because of data requests. That is a different code in the budget, it is charged to a different department. You, a career educator with years of experience as administrator, and 11 years as a school board member, knew very well that with a phone call to the finance department, you could have had the exact number in a matter of seconds. I, a member of the public, have to make a data request, and it takes days. Do you think that we taxpayers are stupid? You cannot continue with your dishonesty. What you did is you spoke to someone who did not know the facts. You presented that person's impression as a fact. It wasn't a fact. It was another attempt by you to hide the truth. Also, at the December 19th meeting, you said, quote, "What would it take for the Brookview people to embrace the other people in this district?" That was a nasty rhetorical question. Unfortunately, you have a long history of nasty rhetorical questions. I urge every member of the public to read the report of Attorney Kristi Hastings from 2017 about your nasty rhetorical question impugning an honest, hard-working employee of this district, something you did solely to incite your political base, the anti-public education voters. You have a history of dishonesty and belittling people. Your practice of lying and casting aspersions has no place in civil society. You need to reform and live a life of rectitude. Thank you, Chairwoman Stivland.
Hello, members of the board and Superintendent Pontrelli. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Julia Bennett, and I am a senior at the high school. This year, I'm in our AP Government and Politics course. For our semester final, our teacher, Mr. Brickwiss, told us to find something passionate about and get involved. With this freedom, I knew exactly what I wanted to do. With the help of my partner, Izzy Shock, we began to research the impact of climate change and how it relates not only to national politics, but right here in our own district. We followed a case study conducted in two Minnetonka middle schools. They were able to change their single-use plastic materials in their lunchroom into reusable items in only one year, with the support of their district and a grant from the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency. Plastic poses a great threat to the environment and the future of our generation, as well as generations to come. There are numerous amount of dangerous toxins that make up plastic, and all are not compostable. The easiest way to reduce the amount of plastic in our landfills and oceans is to minimize the use of plastic in our daily lives. As students, we use single-use plastic in our lunchrooms every day. While there are other ways to help our environment, plastic is the leading source of garbage in our oceans, as well as the most prominent carbon footprint left behind by students. This is something Izzy and I are very passionate about in our lives outside of school, and we want to do as much as we can before we graduate to begin the idea of change in our lunchrooms. Using the numbers conducted in the Minnetonka study and adjusting the numbers to our student population at Stillwater, we found reusable utensils and containers would prevent almost 9,000 pounds of waste in the first year alone, and more to come in the following years. While there are possible challenges in this reform, such as additional water usage and silver being stolen or lost, over the years, the benefits of reusable materials rather than plastic would outweigh the difficulties. There are easy and simple ways our district could begin to help combat the negative effects pollution is having in our environment. I may not be able to make a difference on a global scale, but with your help, we could show our students that when we are aware of climate change issues, we can make a change close to home. We care about our future, and I hope you do, too. Izzy and I also began to petition within our school and gathered signatures from other students passionate about change. We have gathered almost 400 signatures in the past two weeks. This is a change students want to see. I also began contact with our Nutrition Services Director, as well as Principal Bach, who has offered support in my decision to pursue this possibility with you tonight. who has offered support in my decision to pursue this possibility with you tonight. As a senior at the high school, I may not be around to see this plan follow through. However, you all have the ability to do so. I ask not only as a student at Stillwater, but as someone who will have to face the effects of climate change in my adult life, that you be the ones who help me make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And that's all we have for Open Forum tonight. The next item on our agenda is the Consent Agenda. I need to read through all of this. It's, we have a long consent agenda, so bear with me. I'm going to read through all of these, and then I'll ask for a motion to approve them. Item A, the Minutes of December 19th Business Meeting. B, the Disbursement Register, December 21st. The C, the Human Resources Personnel Report. D, Designate Official Publication. E, Resolution to Designate District Depositories and Major Accounts. F, Resolution Authorizing the Use of Feximile Signature. G, Resolution Authorizing Administration to Contract for Budgeted Items. H, Resolution Authorizing Administration Preparation to Develop Specifications and Solicit Bids. I, Resolution Authorizing the Executive Director of Finance and Operations and the Supervisor of Financial Services to Make Electronic Fund Transfers. J, Expenditure Approval of Two 6.5 FTE Professional Positions at Afton Lakeland. K, Expenditure Approval for One Additional EBD Teacher at Stonebridge. L, Expenditure Approval of Desks and Chairs for the High School. M, Expenditure Approval for Fixed Asset Inventory and Appraisal. And N, Approval of a Field Trip of One Teacher, Four Chaperones, and 50 high school students with the Wind Ensemble who will be going to Colorado in April. Do I have a motion to approve each of these items?
I was going to pull Item A and J.
Okay, pulling A and J. Anything else?
I was going to pull K through M, J through M, actually, but generally.
So you want to pull K, L, M, and N?
No, just J through M.
Not N, just M. Okay. And did you have one as well, Director Riley?
I have, well, I have a correction on the meeting minutes on A, but I also would like to pull E and vote on that separately because I am going to...
E?
Yep.
Okay. So can I, are there any other changes? So then I would like to have a motion to approve Item B, C, D, F, G, H, I, and N.
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's start with A. Was that yours?
Yep, that was mine. Easy, I'm sure Director Riley saw the same thing. So the motion by, on page three of the packet, motion by Riley to adopt, it says total level, and I don't know, minor typo, I'm thinking that should be levy. And then it says motion fails when the motion carried. I don't know if that was your same.
Yes, and I've already discussed it with Sherri, so she's on board.
So on Item, what is this now, on the action item?
On the, it's page, oh, 16. So it's, I don't know, it says 3 and 16 there. Just on the motion, it says, seconded by vote, four ayes, three nays, motion fails, it's motion carries. It's just a little minor typo.
Oh, I see.
I don't know if it should be levies or levels, but...
Total levy. Seconded by, why is it four ayes, three nays?
Motion carries.
Well, yeah, I see why we thought it was fails, because it actually didn't pass, but we were actually approving a lower level. Right, so it's sort of a double negative. Okay, so if we're going to approve the minutes from the December 19th meeting, we do need to make that change. So would you like to make a motion to make the change to Item B? Then we would approve Consent Agenda Item A with the changes made. Is that correct?
Sure.
Okay, so do we have a second for that?
Second.
Second. Any questions or comments?
Just to clarify, it's Item A, but it's under B.
Revised budget. Oh, this is Item A, sorry. Sherri, you follow exactly what, okay, you've got that, all right. Any other questions or comments? Okay, all in favor of the approval of Item A with the changes? Raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Nay? Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, so Item E, the Resolution to Designate District Depositories and Major Accounts. This was Director Riley?
Correct. I would like to abstain from this vote because I have a child that works at U.S. Bank.
Thank you. Are there any other concerns or questions about this one?
I'll move.
Okay.
Move adoption.
Director Patachik moves adopting Item Number E. Do we have a second, Director Weisberg? Any other questions or comments? All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Nay?
One abstention.
Okay, that's, oh, one abstention, so that's six to zero. Okay, let's look at J, the Expenditure Approval of Two 6.5 FTE Professional Positions at Afton Lakeland.
The only, yep, that was me. The only reason I just wanted to draw attention to this is as we move forward with, Director Pearson's looking for feedback and whatnot on these expenditure forms, I just wanted to have, it's anticipated expense, 37K, which is an add-on. I just feel that this one would, is appropriate to have a discussion on, and I'm probably going to be referring to it as we move forward with discussions on this form. So I'm just honestly just highlighting it in this moment in time because I'll probably be bringing it back when we have those discussions. So I'm ready to move.
Can I just ask a question?
Yeah.
Are you of the mind that when we are using the form for an expenditure, that we should perhaps have it as an action item instead of on the consent in case there is discussion? Or is it something else?
Actually, I just, I mean, I appreciate that question. I think we need to have a full board kind of discussion on the forms again, and I think that was going to be in our plan. So perhaps that what you just stated there is something that we can discuss when we have that full board table conversation. I just wanted to highlight this form because I do want to kind of talk about this as part of that discussion. I'm not making an assessment right now on whether, pull out of a consent action item. For me, I'm fine with just having that discussion when we have that discussion. I just wanted everyone to see this form highlighted because I'll probably be bringing it back at some point, just as an example to discuss.
Okay, so really, the form is being used for J, K, L, and M.
This one is...
Just wanted to highlight J for some reason.
I'm just highlighting J for the moment because it's 37K, it's an add-on to an additional, and I think we're going to, at least I plan to have a discussion on personnel in general as pertains to these expenditure reports. So this is going to be part of that discussion.
Okay, okay, I understand. All right, so would you like to make a motion that we approve J?
Well, I pulled it, too.
Oh, you did?
Yep.
That's right, okay.
J through M. And it's the same question for all of them. It was just where is the money coming from to pay these positions?
Is it in the budget?
Yeah, is it currently, is it something currently budgeted for or...
So as we've talked, I think both at the finance meetings, I explained, and then with the weekly meetings that we've had with the previous chair and vice chair, the documents that are coming to you from probably mostly me or Kathy, but I think so far it's just been from me, represent staffing changes that are not in the budget, which is why they're coming. Particularly this one, you'll notice this one for 6.5 hours times two paras is under the $50,000 threshold, but because we don't have it in the budget, which Director Weisberg is what I shared with you a couple of times, is if it's not in the budget, it's going to come your way so that you know that it's not in the budget. The struggle we end up having with this in particular and the next one, which is the EBD Cluster Program, is these are specific to special education, and so I don't know how else we cover the needs of our kids if we don't approve them, but nonetheless, we're trying to follow the form in its current state, not that it won't change or progress, but that's why they're living right here, is just so that we're following the best that we can. But they're not in the budget, and that's why it says at the bottom there that they'll need to be funded and that it's not a one-time expense and that there really isn't an offsetting revenue except for any special ed reimbursement, which that fluctuates depending upon what it is and what it's for.
Thank you.
And I will jump in with, as it relates to L and M. L is the desks and chairs for the high school. Both on the expenditure form and in the cover letter, we indicate that this is coming directly from capital. What we're doing is we're replacing, we do this, now I think this is our third, maybe fourth year of doing this, where we get a shipment of desks in, we use them for AP testing, and then we replace old desks, and it works quite well because we don't, we kind of kill two birds with one stone, if you will, with accommodating AP testing and then not having that in storage. And then moving on to the M, which is the fixed asset and inventory. And again, on the expenditure form, it's identified that there will be a direct impact to the capital budget. Again, both items were budgeted. It was planned and budgeted, and their indirect impact could be that our property and liability insurance rate, I mean, they could go up or down because we'll actually have a, probably a better valuation than we've had, you know, just estimating a 3% to 5% increase every year since 2002. So that could be an indirect cost that, or savings that we have, depending if we're overvaluing or not. So both plants, both the desks and the fixed asset coming out of capital, we just don't know what the fixed asset is going to do to our property and liability, but at least we're insuring what we should be insuring.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Since you just mentioned that L with that fixed asset, actually, does it say anywhere, how long will it take probably for us to get that back? I mean, approximately, like, is it a long process?
The process in and of itself, once they're out here, shouldn't be long. It's just then the accumulation of data and putting it all together. I would imagine it would be, you know, a few months.
Okay.
Ideally, we're now starting the, our insurance renewal cycle now for property and liability. I don't know that we'll necessarily have it, but we'll make adjustments to the policy after the fact.
So we'll start looking for it in February, March, or something?
Absolutely.
All right.
And the goal would be obviously to have it by the end of the fiscal year, so then we can use it for audit and depreciation and that sort of thing. And it's going to come down to scheduling of the company just when we start.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, let's, would there be any concern with trying to approve J, K, L, and M altogether collectively, or do we want to do these separately? Does anybody have any thoughts? I think, just keep rolling through.
I move to put them together.
Okay, so can I take that as a motion that you would like to approve J, K, L, and M?
Yes.
I'll second.
Okay, Director Patachik, seconds. Any other questions or comments on J, K, L, or M? Okay, all in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, we have unanimous. All right, moving on to reports. Basically, what we have in the reports is just the simple statement of the school board member assignments. As you all know, at the beginning of January, we go through the process of sort of reorganizing our working groups a little bit. We have six positions now for school board representation at the AMSD, the Community Ed Advisory Council, the Minnesota State High School League, Northeast Metro 916 Partnership Plan, and Schools for Equity and Education. Additionally, we have this, the working groups, Finance and Operations Legislative Personnel and Policy. We also have, we should have community engagement on here. I don't know how I missed that. So there actually should be five. So I think what we have done typically in the past is, I will send an email out sometime tonight or tomorrow asking for your requests. If you have a preference for any one of these positions, please let me know as soon as possible, and let's get these finalized as quickly as we can. If you have any questions or concerns, just let me know. Does anybody else have any other comments or questions about this process? Okay, moving on, action items. Action Item A is to establish our calendar for the coming year. I don't know about you, but when I looked at this, I thought it was really a good calendar. It feels like a good one to me. It makes a lot of sense. I don't think there are any big issues or concerns. Does anybody have anything they would like to share regarding the calendar? Director Pearson?
I would just say thank you to Sherri for really looking at this. I know this last year, we had a few weeks that were a little off, and I think we've gotten rid of that in this calendar, so it looks like a good calendar.
Director Burns?
I just have one question about the May dates, May 14th, May 28th. I believe that May 28th is right near the very end of school. Is that correct?
That may be the last...
May 29th, I believe, is the last day of school. I just wanted to make sure that that's not going to conflict with obligations of administration for, in particular.
Appreciate that, we're good.
Okay.
Thank you. Also, I'd just like to point out that we do have two meetings in July and in December that will be morning meetings. Those will both be scheduled at Central Services, and that's because we just do disbursements on those meetings. They're meant to be very quick, even though we don't always stick to that. We'll try to stick to that this year. Any other comments or questions? Director Pelletier?
I'll make a motion, yeah, hopefully no last-minute surprises on those eight-minute, 8:00 a.m. meetings. I move to approve the 2020 School Board Meeting Calendar.
Do I have a second?
One second.
Is that Director Pearson? All right, we have a second. Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Not a commoner question, just because I always like to get this out early and often, then your Truth and Taxation hearing will be earlier than it normally is. It will be at the December 3rd meeting, just so the public, and they'll get noticed and what have you, but I just want to make sure you're aware of that as well.
The deadline is like the 16th or something, right?
We have until the end of the month, but that will, with the 17th being disbursements, the 3rd is when we will hold our Truth and Taxation.
Okay. Okay, I think that seems fine. Any other comments or questions? All right, all in favor of approving the calendar as it is? Raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, it passes unanimously. Okay, next item is we, every year at this time of year, it's our organizational meeting. We take a look at the school board salaries. Our current elected school board member receives an annual salary of $4,750. The board chair receives an additional 500 for a total annual salary of $5,250. I think it was great that, I'm not sure who decided to put this in the packet, but there is some information about what our salaries have been in the past and what some of our other neighboring school districts are, what their compensation is. I think we're a little bit on the low end, in my opinion, but we're, you know, definitely not the lowest. So I feel pretty good about where we're at. I don't know if anybody else has any comments or questions or things that they like to discuss about the board member salaries. I'll open that up right now.
Can I ask a question?
Director Pearson?
Do we, and I should have thought of this ahead of time, do we have any idea, because it says that in 2018, we added the mileage reimbursement, do we have any idea how much that is? How much is being turned in for that?
I would say we are, you know, off the cuff, we're probably in the range of a few thousand dollars. That might be high, but it's not substantial. It's... of a few thousand dollars. That might be high, but it's, it's not substantial. It's, I'd say no less than 900, no greater than 2,500 would be my guess.
Thank you. That's good to know. Any other comments or questions?
I move, we leave the salaries as they are.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Director Pelletier, seconds. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, if you agree, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, it is unanimous. We're keeping them the same. All right, item C is the School Cafe service agreement, and I have here that Director Hoheisel will share with us a little bit of information.
Thank you, Chair Stivlin, Superintendent Pontrelli, school board members. I don't, I am not aware of, if the board is aware of the software issues that we've been having, but Fee Pay, which is our primary software for collection of revenue, has had its challenges since the beginning of the school year. The biggest impact to that, at least initially or at this time of year, is to our food service account. That's how parents are making deposits, money's going in, and, and they haven't been able to do that electronically. School Cafe is an app, a software application that is currently being used by, by the school district and by parents. It provides menus. It allows parents to apply for free and reduced benefits. You can see your child's balance, but we don't have it currently established as a method that will collect electronic payments. And so what is in front of you is, is a service agreement to be able to do that. One of the differences between School Ca, the School Cafe agreement and the Fee Pay agreement is about a percent, you know, it's 1.01% in service charge fees, above what Fee Pay was. So in the scheme of, you know, we probably collect electronically about $2.2 million. What was being paid for Fee Pay and what was being, what is now being proposed for School Cafe is about $22,000 per annum, is about our best guess. The food service account picks that up, obviously, those are dollars. On the flip side of that, though, is we are taking a significant loss right now in our à la carte revenue, and honestly, that's our moneymaker for the district. And when I say a significant loss, if we continued at the pace we're at, we would stand to lose approximately 146,000 to 155,000 annually in à la carte sales. If people can't, because what happens is we never stop a child from eating, we will stop them from getting à la carte if they don't have money in their account. And if parents aren't able to get, you know, checks or money to us quick enough, or whatever happens, then the kids aren't buying à la carte, and that's reducing our revenue. So when comparing the additional cost, having this available to parents next week as an immediate solution versus the lost revenue, and quite honestly, the frustration of waiting for the Fee Pay system to come back online and we don't know what it is, I am recommending that we move over, enter into an agreement with School Cafe and proceed.
Okay.
Question. Does that mean most likely, and I know why you're concerned about the financial part, the kid goes unfed, so to speak?
The kid never goes unfed. They always receive a type A lunch. It's just there are kids that choose à la carte items. They choose additional items.
For a dollar fifty, an Izzy, an Ice, dollar fifty.
And, and I would say the older the child, the more likely that they're, well, it doesn't really, in elementary school, but as they progress, it's just, they get a, they're not eating the type A lunch. We will never stop a child from taking a type A lunch regardless of the, what's in their account. They will not go hungry. They just might not get the additional stuff that, that they have grown to love.
The fun stuff. Yes. Thank you for clarifying that, Director Pearson.
Thank you. What does this do to the rest of Fee Pay? When I go on right now, I can't access anything. None of my kids are there, nothing's there. So are we, is this just a first tier, and we're going to have to look at something else?
So we were, when we, when the board had implemented last year, when we looked at switching over the fees from the district, picking up essentially the cost of the fees to do the electronic transaction to the parents absorbing that, we also started the process of looking at our systems. We knew community education, they're already on Elio, which is, so they're kind of up and running and independent. We had moved to Fee Pay five, six years ago now, to get everything kind of a one-stop shop for parents. So we started reviewing different vendors. We actually had a user group in, all the various departments that use Fee Pay in our district before this ever happened, to start saying, you know, is there another option? It's been five, six years. Let's start looking at what's available to us, what other vendors are offering. So we were, we're fortunate in that we've already started to review that, to see if we wanted to go a different direction. Right now, we, like I said, community services is, is covered. With this, food service will be covered. Now we're talking about field trips, athletics, various activities, and we, we're immediately right now, old school. Like, we're back to people, please write a check, please send in your permission form, which is where we don't want to be. We will continue with the analysis of what is the next solution, or the best solution for us moving forward, which we had already started.
Got a question.
Yeah, sorry, Director Burns.
So what are we looking at options for? We're losing revenue currently. Potentially, this option that's been proposed to us is more expensive than what we currently have. What are options for redress from Fee Pay?
I do, I have not been the one in direct communication. You're saying as far as...
Well, contractually, they're, we're paying them to provide a service, and they're not doing that.
And I would, I would assume that based on, I would have to review the contract based on where we stand. I would imagine that we would pursue whatever contractually we're eligible to pursue. It is big, and it is bigger than us. I mean, this isn't a Stillwater, this isn't a Stillwater issue. It is a Stillwater and a Hudson, and I mean, you name a school that's on Fee Pay, and we're all in the same boat. It's essentially like the entire company went down.
We also had challenges over the summer, too, I believe, when we were trying to register for activities. And that maybe was a Stillwater-specific issue that we had to work through, I think.
I believe that was a Stillwater-specific issue, but nonetheless, there hasn't, and in part, why we've started to, before the bottom fell out, if you will, why we started to review along with the fees, their level of, candidly, their level of service has been declining, the attention to it has been declining, the ability, you know, that it's, we're just, they've, they've lost their footing as far as being really strong.
So it sounds like we do need to find something other than Fee Pay for any parents or community members that might be out there listening right now. What kind of a timeline is realistic to think about when we'll be able to have something up and running that would replace it?
I would have to say, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna err on the side of caution. In absence of Fee Pay being able to fix what is not working for them right now...
That might happen.
It could.
That could happen.
It could happen. That could happen. I would say we are probably looking at, you know, to get someone in, reviewed. We're probably looking at coming into next year with that. I, I don't believe it's realistic, now that we're essentially in the middle of January, to pick a vendor, have the vendor in front of you, work on the conversion. I really would, it's a, it's a 2021.
So we're just going to ask for patience, please?
We are, and we're really gonna, unfortunately, we're going to have to, and I don't like it. I'm sure parents don't like it for all sorts of reasons. We're just gonna have to go back to a very basic way of doing things, which is paper, until...
It still works.
It does. It does.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? I, well, go ahead, Director Burns.
I just have, I'm trying to look for, do we know what the term is on this agreement? If there's a termination provision? What are we locked into if we agree to this?
Agreement commences until terminated by either party for any reason by providing a 30-day written notice to the other party.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. And I had another question, too, on the very last, I think it's the very last page, or almost, yeah, it's the last page of the contract itself, where it has like bank information and all of that. It says payment limits for each transaction, and it says the minimum amount is not less than zero, and we have 10. And then it says the maximum amount is not more than 100, but we have 1,000 listed there. So is that a typo, or?
No. And the company, School Cafe is the one that provided this agreement and filled in those blanks. Part of it is in negotiation of that 5%, there's terms, because, just the number of transactions, they don't want someone to, you know, deposit two, they want to guarantee that five, there's different rates built in for different dollar amounts. They're saying we, we don't want to take less than $10. I think right now, it's a $20 limit with Fee Pay.
Okay.
And then the $1,000, and I think, honestly, in a food service account, that would be unique for someone to probably put more than that in, in a year, because the charges wouldn't, well, you could, you know, wouldn't have...
With the transaction fee, they are not paying for a transaction fee anyways, so...
They aren't, but we are.
But we are, okay.
They aren't, but we are. And so that is the company filling in the blanks based on negotiation to get them to 5%.
Okay, so that's not a typo, and everything's fine?
It is not. It is not.
Okay. Great. Any other questions or comments? All right, so do we, Director Pelletier?
Motion to approve the School Cafe service requirement agreement.
Great, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Director Weisberg, seconds. Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, it is unanimous. The next item on our agenda is board member updates. And the first one is the chairperson report, and I do not have anything to share. Actually, that's not true. Actually, I do have one thing to share. I am currently serving on the 916 board, and I wanted to let everybody know that District 916, Northeast Metro District 916, will be hosting a school leader equity seminar. It's coming up on January 22nd from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. The work that 916 has been doing has been really quite fabulous, and I have attended some of their events in the past. I am very impressed. I would think that this will be an amazing event. I unfortunately have something else going on that night. I can't go, but I would recommend that all of you take a look. If you want more information, just let me know. So let's see. How should we go next? Should we start with Director Burns?
Do we have any working group reports?
Oh, it's Board Member Reports is first.
No, working group.
I have Board Member Reports.
On here, it's chairperson, then working groups.
Oh, okay. They're different. I'm not crazy. It's different. Okay, let's do working group reports. First one is community engagement. Would you like to share something?
Sure. So we met this morning briefly, just to do a recap on our last month's meeting where we met with our, some of the leaders of our senior communities. We had a really great meeting with them last month and didn't want to let any of that drop. Fortunately or unfortunately, many of the things that came out of that meeting are things that Chris will have to do, and so I thank you in advance for the work that you'll do. There is a real desire on the, on the part of these senior communities to be involved in our schools, whether it's volunteering, or just, some of them are really excited about the career pathways and have ideas of how they can get students in their buildings, and it can help them also, as they can get workers. And there's some really good college opportunities at some of the, some of the senior living places. So we, we want to make sure that where they want to be volunteering, that we can get them in our buildings. They're also really excited about the potential of attending some music performances, maybe during the school day, maybe a dress rehearsal or something like that. So Chris is going to be reaching out to some of our staff about that. And then making sure that we invite them to large events, like the Da Vinci Fest and things like that, that we can maintain a list where they can just get an email with a printout and put it up in their buildings. The part that we talked about, which there'll be a new community engagement working group, but we would really like to start with the five that we met with and making a commitment to go to each one, whether it's two or three board members to go, and whether we bring some treats and just have conversation, or we talked about, maybe we would provide bingo prizes and, you know, call bingo numbers, or something like that, just to get into each of the buildings. And then we can grow from there, because there's many, many, many more senior communities in our area, but I think it's a good way just to start building a relationship with our communities, that they want to be part of our district. They're very in favor of what's happening with kids and want to be involved. So that's what we talked about.
Thank you. All right, Finance and Operations.
We didn't have a meeting in December.
Okay, Legislative?
A couple things here. One, we were talking as a committee the last time we met of possibly trying to meet with our local member in the House of Representatives in Washington, and particularly talking about cross-subsidy, the way events are shaping up in Washington. I'm not sure how availability or realistic that is, but nevertheless, there is something that you might, those interested, might want to jot down. On the 24th of January, which is a Friday morning, C is having a meeting, and there are two topics there that you might be interested in. I'll go to the second one they're going to have, is there's a 2020 legislative session, education policy priorities, and the guests there are Senator Carla Nelson and Representative Cheryl Yakum, the chairs of the Minnesota Senate and the House of Representation, or Representatives Education Policy Committee will be discussing their priorities for the legislative session. So I think some of you may be interested in that. The other one that, and, and I'm just going to do this legislatively, I've got another meeting I want to talk about that's tomorrow, but on the 24th, which is a day after the proposed secondary literacy comes to the board, there is a researcher by the name of Dr. Lori Hillman, and she's the director of the Minnesota Center for Reading Reach, and she'll address basically five questions, as they have it here, is what are the essential components of reading instruction? Why are some students having difficulty becoming professional readers? How are new teachers being prepared to teach reading? And how can school leaders support their current staff to be effective teachers of reading? So I'm saying that may be of interest to board members and/or staff members, two very different, but I think very relevant topics that'll be talked about. So given that, I'll hold off. I got one other thing, but when we go down the line, I'll mention that as well.
Great. Thank you. The next one is policy, and we have not had a meeting for quite some time, so there's nothing to report at this time on policy. So now we will go to Board Member Reports. And I think we will start down here with Director Burns. We'll just work down our line.
Thank you. Not too much to report. I've begun to work with our, my assigned school and program with the, with the board member liaisons, the board liaison, and I know that we're going to have, or I think we're going to have an opportunity to talk more about that, but just to say that initial feedback has been positive on that. Then my, my second comment is that, you know, I think based on conversations and decisions that we've made in the last few meetings, we have a lot of discussion and a lot of decisions to make very, very soon, and I hope that we can make time to have those discussions in the very near future. I think we need to have a very thorough discussion, and we need to make decisions. So I'm, I'm hopeful that through work, work sessions coming up here in the month of January, that we can get that done.
Okay, thank you.
I have nothing tonight.
Okay.
I have two things I'd like to mention. One is that tomorrow morning, for those of you who are interested, I think both topics, and they'll be discussed at AMSD, and they brought in two presenters. Those meetings take place in Little Canada. If anybody's interested, Sarah and I plan on attending. Certainly room if somebody else wants to carpool there as well. But the first speaker is going to be from the Department of Employment and Economic Development Commissioners, Commissioner Steve Grove, and he'll share an overview of their workforce development priorities in concluding, or rather, including preparing students for in-demand occupations and labor market trends. So I think that's a topic that fits in very well with our pathways initiative. The second is a very different topic, but also, I think, very, very relevant, and they're bringing in Dr. and they're bringing in Dr. Thomas Kotkey, and he's the medical director for Wellbeing and Health Partners, and Anne Krapik, and she's the senior program manager for Twin Cities Medical Society. And they're both going to be talking about the challenges and risks associated with the rapid increase in teen vaping. So I'm sure that's a topic some of you may be interested in as well. So again, the meeting's early. It starts at 7:30 is when you gotta be there, but their meetings move rather rapidly, and they're usually done by 9 o'clock or shortly thereafter. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I don't have anything at this time.
Just a couple really quick things. Next week is the MSBA Leadership Conference, and Thursday and Friday, I'll be attending on Thursday, so if you're there, I hope to see you. It's always a good time to just connect with other districts and see what some other schools are doing and hear some good presentations. The other thing is just Kulak shared a lot about our sports teams, and just, I, gate judged the ski meet for the first time ever, and it was harder than they said it was going to be, but it was fun, and fun to watch the kids come down. And man, they work really, really hard, especially if they fall. They work really hard to keep themselves back up. So just the students that we have and how hard they work in everything they do, whether it's sports or activities, I'm just always impressed by them. That's it.
I visited Stonebridge today. I'm the liaison for Stonebridge and Transitions this semester. And that was actually one of my questions, is the next session starts end of this month?
You can start any time after second semester starts. We just, we're giving extra time for first semester, because we started so late.
Okay, okay. And it was, it was wonderful. But all three of my children went to Stonebridge for at least a period of time, and so many things have changed. When my youngest went there, they still had the old colony system. So it was really nice to see a couple of teachers were still there from way back when. But it was a really wonderful tour, and then I have contacted Transitions, and we're gonna set up something next week, so I'm excited about that.
Okay, thank you. Director Pelletier?
All right. Just a quick FYI, the DaVinci Fest is coming up on January 25th. They're looking for, you know, it'd be really nice to get some board members there. They're looking for volunteers, so I just wanted to give them a little shout out. It's the most wonderful, just wonderful, special thing that we have in the district, and looking at a special person in the room today that's been heavily a part of that. So it's exciting stuff. And then secondly, I just wanted to highlight something really fantastic. We, I was contacted by a resident who stumbled across a bunch of students at The Cub in Stillwater, and they were bagging groceries, and he said, you know, could you just look into this for me? I just wanted more information. It was so wonderful that I thought I would put together. I researched it a little bit, and to me, I hope you find it as well. It was really worth reporting on this a little bit. It's called the Trust Club. It's something that, I started with Rob Bogby, so I didn't know where to go with this. So basically, it's, it's two teachers, and I, it's been a crazy week for me on a personal level, so everything has been late, and I left my notes at home, the dog ate the homework. So I apologize, this is gonna be a little bit late, or I'm sorry, lengthy. But Paula Harrison at the high school and John McAllister had this up. And it stands for, I had this so well-written, and I lost all of it. Trust stands for True Respect Unify Students Together. It's a club that was formed following the introduction of our new physical education class that they started last year called Unified Physical Education, which combines general ed students with special ed students working together. This also fulfills our physical education graduation requirement. And they partner with the Special Olympics for this program. And then she sent me some facts. Here's some facts we found. National statistics show that students with and without disabilities don't interact with each other in or out of the classroom. The Unified Schools Program breaks down barriers and constructs a framework that encourages inclusion and authentic relationships. As students graduate and bring their experiences to their communities, they help build a better society. And the begging was fundraising for the, for the club. They use those donations to support, they're doing a polar plunge on February 28th in Minneapolis. I have a link and all that good stuff. Anyway, so I'm gonna move on quickly. Below is our focus on both the class and the club. These are unique opportunities for our students with and without disabilities to work through educational and physical activities, coming together on equal terms through ongoing social, sports, wellness, fitness, and leadership activities. We focus on fostering new friendships, embracing each other's differences, and celebrating success in various situations, changing how students interact with one another on a daily basis, and accepting everyone the way they are. It would be our pleasure to speak with you further on this life change event. I say yes, yes, let's do it. Bring it on. I'm so proud, very proud. Well done, and thank you. And thank you for hearing that little, it was, it's wonderful, and it's nothing but pride from this lady.
Thank you for sharing that. I really appreciate that. Wonder, that's very heartwarming. And did you have something you wanted to say about DaVinci Fest?
Oh, gosh, no.
This is something else. Okay, something totally else.
No, it is something totally, something else, but before the meeting adjourns, typically, we don't address open forum speakers, so I'm just going to address the board, even though I thought she did a great job, and I appreciate the passion, just to let the board know that we are putting silverware in the high school tomorrow.
Oh, my gosh!
People are using that, so...
It's pretty quick turnaround.
We're trying to make progress towards student initiatives. How's that?
I love it.
Talk about it.
Thank you very much.
Chair Stivlin, can I just make one more comment? That is a quick turnaround. Congratulations! I just wanna recognize Paula Harrison and her colleague John are doing an amazing job, but we also have Caitlin Willis and Paul Lee in the audience tonight, and Special Education has really helped support all of that work for our kids, for increasing their opportunities for activities outside the classroom and with their peers. So thank you, Caitlin and Paul.
I'm looking at you thinking, I know you're a big part of it, too, so I'm thankful that you said that, yeah.
Yes, thank you so much. Great stuff. Awesome. Thank you so much. Anybody have anything else? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.